Peanut Grille, but it was.
Twenty-three, we have the full complement of Washington County Commissioners, Commissioner and Vice Chair Roy Rogers, Commissioner Nafisa Fai, myself Chair Harrington, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willie. Alrighty, we're starting off with Board and Leadership Communication. And to give everyone a couple more minutes to get settled, I'm going to suggest that we look at the two draft letters first. The first one, the draft letter of support for Tanya Angie's candidacy for ICMA President. We've had this thank you to Commissioner Treese for your authorship. So this is of no surprise to us as Commissioners. Are there any questions, comments, or otherwise on that letter?
Yeah, I mentioned that I thought, in fact, I thought it's on you as well as to Pam that maybe a couple of things could be added. It's a well-written letter. So Pam, I thought you did a good job. Maybe something in the area of Tanya has done a really outstanding job working with a budget that is not not expanding to meet the needs of a population. So she's working under difficult financial situation. I think that resonates with a lot of folks who say, but can you work with, you know, all organizations, their budgets are shrinking? And I think you said Pam that you thought that that would be acceptable. The other thing is that, and I guess I subscribe to this personally myself, is that all organizations are having a great number of changes in personnel due to, some say the Silver tsunami, others say it's just, you know, this way that the world is. And Tony is capable in working in organizations where there's a lot of change in personnel and continuing to maintain the services and work effectively with the government. So I just thought that might resonate with people around the country that they're saying, well gee, she worked with budgets, you know, are challenging. We all do that. Working with staff is changing. We all do that. So just as a couple of suggestions, I mean.
I actually, where you did talk to me, Commissioner Rogers, you did talk to me earlier about it. And there is a spot after, and while others are more specific to our county structure, which is this third line in the second paragraph that I can add those.
Did you send that?
Oh, yeah. You got a copy of the letter and it's in your.
No, I got the original one, but I mean.
I have it. I have.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I wanted to have this discussion.
Maybe you did that over lunch.
Everyone agreed.
I have no problem with those suggested changes. I would like the reminder as to the date by which this needs to be submitted.
January ninth?
That's the package deadline, but I.
So that would be before our meeting next Tuesday, in which case we would need to give our thumbs up today. Or if you could get us an additional draft this Thursday for a final thumbs up, that would be great.
We will do that. Did you have any additions or changes?
Nope, I was fine as is.
No, I'm good. I thought it was a good letter, too. I appreciate you doing that.
Thumbs up. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thursday. Okay.
Hopefully I would like to think.
If you can't, that's fine. I just thought, anything we can do to help her out.
I'd also like to thank Megan. Megan helped a lot on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second regard to comments on the proposal and, excuse me, comments on the purpose and need and proposed action for analysis of regional mobility pricing project under the National Environmental Project Act, NEPA. And I would, in addition to calling our attention to that draft letter, I would also like to thank Ms. Defabat for sending us an email with further information about tolling and variable price tolling and so forth. So we have an abundance of information. I'll start. I think this is a really good letter. And the various items that it speaks to, I appreciate how each one of these is not only bolded, so it's clear what we're talking about, but what you have have proposed here for each of these categories. Other Commissioner thoughts?
I appreciated that we didn't take a position, but you crafted a message that really was strategic and thoughtful. So thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, and good call on this. I think one thing that Chris did that's really innovative around the public transportation call out for investment, he put Southwest Corridor, Southwest Light Rail. So I think that was really a good foresight on yourself to advocate that some of that money could be dedicated here. So good call. I think the only, the only thing that I noticed is usually our letters are signed by the chair and you put undersigned. So we're listing individuals since there's multiple. So I thought maybe we could just, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and that chair sign. But other than that, I'm okay with that.
Do Commissioners have any other comments? I am just fine if it's signed by all Commissioners, too. I do appreciate your comment, though. There is, oh, well, once it's put on letterhead, it's going to fold over onto three pages. No doubt. So we're not saving any paper. But, and we are, in terms of membership, for across our, our three county region, we are the most stable commission of the three. So I think for something of this scale and given how the legislature has so many changes, I think it would be impactful to actually have all five individual signatures.
I agree with that. I would prefer to have all five signatures.
Great. Thank you again for your good crafting on that. Alrighty, so now we'll move back to Board Communication. Who would like to go first?
I can go first and say Happy New Year, everyone. We've had a good couple of weeks of break and I hope everyone celebrated and welcomed the 2023 safely. It's a busy month ahead and a busy week this week, so more to report.
Great. Anybody else? Anything? Welcome to January. It's like, woo-hoo.
I have, now it's on a. I kind of have a long list, so, but it's stuff that we do, since we haven't had a meeting since mid-December. So you're finished, right?
Take it away.
Thank you. And you're.
Go for it.
I was just looking for approval to.
Leave some oxygen in the air.
Okay, I'll try it. I'll try. So I don't, and I'm just going to hit the highlights here.
Some time for Commissioner Willie.
Okay. Commissioner Fai and I had coffee with Mayor Beatty. It's part of our ongoing discussions and we are going to continue that through this next year. I had a lunch with Representative Neron Courtney Neron and that was part of my effort to stay engaged with legislators in the area. And she had some interesting issues about tolling and she also wanted to talk to me about the Tonkin Trail and the kind of connection point for the Tonkin Trail. I told her I would put her in touch with CWS. She was interested in talking to them, too, because there's some wetland issues and some other issues around that. So I had the last meeting of impact and that included a briefing on the policy framework for the 2023 Regional Transportation Call for Projects, Regional Transportation Plan Call for Projects and Climate Smart Strategy Update and Climate Analysis for RTP. And a presentation on the factors of homelessness and regional cooperation. And I pulled forward your comment about the work that's already been done on the climate issues. The, I met with Representative Helm. He's, as you all know, very interested in water-related issues and he's another person that I'm going to be connecting for a conversation with Clean Water Services. He's had other conversations with them, but was interested in having another. I met with Wendy Kroger for coffee and Wendy, surprised to me, brought Dick Scouton with her. And they wanted to talk about Cooper Mountain. I believe that I followed the same path that others have followed with them in relationship to the fact that our Metro Nature and Parks Measure Funds are already allocated. It's, and it's unclear at this point if we have any other financial contribution that we would make. I'm in support of what they're trying to do, but I wanted to make it clear that I'm not in a position to make any commitments to about our funding here. I'm sorry I didn't attend the Safe Rest Pods tour. That was a bad, bad sick day for me, but.
Oh, bummer.
Feeling much better. I had a.
It was not a day where you would have wanted to stand in the cold if you weren't feeling.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you wouldn't have wanted to be around me either. So that's, that's the good news. But thank you, and I'm glad that the rest of you did go on that. I did have coffee with the Friends of Alpenrose. Now, the Friends of Alpenrose is a group. Alpenrose Dairy is in Multnomah County, as you know, but they're looking at the development there and they wanted to meet with me because our current maps indicate that I, that District Two would be at that time in alignment with Multnomah County and they're concerned about the development going in there and the impact on transportation. So it's now Commissioner Fai's Commissioner Fai's area. And so we'll, we'll be talking about what, what that means. And I have a meeting scheduled with Land Use and Transportation as well, just to let you know what their concerns are and to make sure that I'm following up with, with what their thoughts were. Councilor Wang from Metro is also convening a larger meeting with all the parties involved later in the year. I attended the Community Action Board Meeting and there, it wasn't a business meeting as much as it was a review of Director Kemp Shui's performance and to approve what his next steps and his goals and his race. But everything was very positive along those lines. This week I'm meeting with Just Compassion with Commissioner Willie. I have a Clean Water Services briefing. I have an impact strategy session set up. And then I'm meeting with Washington County Kids Briefing from Katie Riley and Susan Bender Phelps. Katie reached out and asked if I would meet with her. And I have a meetup with Senator Steiner.
And before our meeting next Tuesday, you also have the AOC.
Yes.
Legislative Committee Meeting and Board of Directors Meeting, and then we have an ACRE meeting on Monday.
Yes, it's hopping busy here in January. Yes, and I, that, those meetings for AOC are in Salem and I assume you're going to be going as well.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Yes, indeed. And they've published the rotation for what meetings will be face-to-face and what meetings will be Zoom.
So they use a different platform, I think.
Yeah, Google, you're right. Hybrid. I should have said hybrid or. Yeah. Nothing like being face-to-face. Anyway, who's next? Commissioner Willie, there's.
Still staring.
Left in the room.
It will be fast then. I attended two retirements in the last couple of weeks. Don Odomont, of course, with the city. He'd been there for 28 years. And the, I always call him the self-proclaimed transportation guru, but certainly the retirement party had a really good turnout and they did some good roasting of Don, which he was certainly worthy of. But he, his projects were listed in the slide presentation that he'd been involved with for all those years. And it's, it's pretty impressive, the number of projects that he certainly had his fingers on. And then the other one was Commissioner Hymanular of Columbia County. He has been the Chair of Northwest Act for quite some time. And yeah, so we had to say goodbye to him that was down at Columbia County Fairgrounds, which is not an easy place to find. It is, GPS doesn't even like it. So, and considering that they've got, well, the highway there, whatever, Highway 30 that is, I think, is under construction so that where you're supposed to turn left, you can't turn left. Anyway, it was interesting, but it was a good, good retirement party. And I was glad that, to be there and meet with some other folks around the other counties as well. As Pam said, Safe Rest Pods Tour, I did, what did attend that with several of us. And it was, that was a great insight as to how that collaboration with the City of Hillsborough is. And that's going to be a great facility when that, when that gets to be full build out. Had the legislative breakfast chair and I were at the legislative breakfast at the Reserve where we got to talk to our legislators about providing adequate funding for our judicial system. And I think they, they hear this. This is the only time they actually, I think, hear from the counties. And I think this is a great breakfast. I'm glad to see that we were, we were able to do that in person. During TV Highway Steering Committee with Nafisa, certainly. And then I met with Debbie Garman, who is, what's the organization she's with? Environmentalists. And there was four of them that met with me and it was just a good conversation for me. It's one of those educational things where you, you get their perspective and maybe some suggestions on how we can move ahead on some climate action that isn't expensive or is not too arduous, I guess, on our staff. So anyway, it was a good conversation and I said that I would continue to have conversations with them. And then one thing is, I believe I'm going to have a new CPO out in Forest Grove that is going to reactivate. And so the other ones so far have not been active or at least haven't been inviting me to attend. So maybe they, they're just doing it real quietly. But anyway, so my CPOs are certainly way behind yours, Pam, and yours has been very active for quite some time. But mine have not been. So I think I'll see some increased activity there. Yeah, we got the Fair Board Meeting this week. Meeting with, in, with the Just Compassion folks with you, Pam. And then I've already had my CWS briefing. So that's pretty quick. So anyway, it's all good. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Rogers.
Let's see, I was going back and looking at it. Everything's been a blur, right? For the last two weeks. I did follow your advice. I did take a half a day at Christmas and a half a day at New Year. I worked every other day. So I'm getting better. Better, but not as good as I ought to be. I understand. WA Board, you would know that. You'd know that. I went to their board meeting. It's always interesting, like every other nonprofit, see what their committees are doing and that sort of thing and hear about their activities. A lot of people I've known for a good number of years. Unfortunately, I had to miss Don's retirement party. I was in Toallerton meeting with some of their leadership. They were trying to keep surprise what's going on there and asking me about county business a little bit. So that's always nice to be with them. We had, let's see, what else? Nothing. Nothing. And that's good. That's all I have. Very low.
And how did the first couple of weeks of January feel for you?
It'll be better. I think I might get it someday. I'll be busy this.
Don't forget, there's another national holiday coming up with Martin Luther King's birthday in a couple of Mondays. I still haven't gotten my head quite wrapped around the days of January yet, but it's, my brain's working on it. So, yeah, it was, our last meeting was on the 13th, I think it was. So, yeah, they're, looking back, there were, I thought I only had one meeting I'd be highlighting and it turns out there were at least six. Commissioner Willie reminded me of the sixth. But just a few things I wanted to note, at the Supportive Housing Services Tri-County Planning Body Meeting, we continued our work in discussing priorities based upon needs. And they sent us a survey and during the holidays and asked us to fill it out before the end of today. So I just tried to fill it out and it is, was a far more extensive survey than I would have liked. So on the fourth group of prioritizing 10 items, I finally just had to select one to 10, one to 10, as a way of signaling, don't have time to give this consideration and where they had things where you had to give reasons for your decisions. I just typed letters. So I think, and I commented, sorry, too long of a survey for one day response. So, oh, well, sorry, folks. I also attended an Urban League in-person meeting here about social justice needs. It was informative, continuing to talk about the need to improve the workforce, both for defenders as well as for, you know, legal aid, you name it. There's a lot of work and Judge Proctor was just mentioning to me this morning about the additional needs for the non-unanimous jury decision to be revisited. So quite a workload happening there. I'm curious, Ms. Angie, if you could speak to it either later today or possibly on Thursday. How did things go for the Safe Rest Pods during the inclement weather that we just had? And was it structurally sound and okay? I really appreciated staff, Washington County staff, working with the City of Hillsborough and the the partners hosting that site for providing us with the tour capability. It was, it was good to see it in person, being mindful that there are still more pods under construction. I had the December monthly Chair Mayor's Meeting and the key agenda topic was to go over legislative agendas per their request. But the timing of that, they needed to come back to it in January. So we went over the, touched on the, the county's ledge agenda, but we'll be picking back up on it in the January meeting. They also had questions about our budget situation. So I'd given them large context setting of information that I pulled all the information that we've had in our public meetings as part of our budget context. And as a result of that, they had very few comments. So they're they're having a much better sense of how the county and the cities are partners in delivering services. And also particularly for the City of Beaverton, they've been going through similar budget challenges as they have been needing to tap into their catastrophic reserves. So a lot of work ahead. I also had a meeting with Senator Lieber and Mayor Beatty talking about the upcoming legislature. And I think we touched on that in a meeting Commissioner Treese and I had with government relations as well. This Thursday, I sent a heads up as soon as I received the outreach from the Governor-elect's office with a meeting. And I still don't know how widespread the meeting invite was, Ms. Angie, to discuss homelessness and behavioral health. So we'll need to try and catch up before that meeting late on Thursday. Heads up to my colleagues to make sure that each of us completes our county council performance review survey, feedback survey before January 10th. Thank you. Oh, good. I have more than just this Friday then. And then the AOC meetings start up. Woo-hoo. It's January and ACRE. And Daniel, if Commissioner Treese and I could get your assistance, we had batted around the idea of having a, an informal CPO seven meeting, somewhat of a, you know, CPO seven meeting with Commissioners and hosting that as a Zoom meeting. So if you could work with our community engagement team to help us support that. That's a CPO that's on hiatus now as the volunteers have been tapped out.
There's no leadership right now for that.
Yeah. Yeah. What's the phrase? Inactive? That's inactive status. Yeah, yeah. So that's it for me. So onward to our leadership, Ms. Angie.
Well, thank you. And I'm fresh off of vacation, which was wonderful and really enjoyed the time with family and reconnecting. So I want to give you a brief public health update. Late last month, Washington County briefly moved into medium community transmission level for COVID, per CDC. The Public Health Division let us know that we are at, we were at the very low end of that PM. See, two weeks off and I forgot. I need a microphone. The Public Health Division let us know that we were at the very low end of medium with 10.6 hospital admissions per 100,000 residents. And in, in the last seven days, but that number has now improved to 7.7 hospital admissions per 100,000 population. Flu and respiratory virus, also commonly known as RSV transmission, have also been high so far this season, although positive test results and hospitalizations for both the flu and RSV have declined in the Portland Tri-County region for the last week of 2022. Public Health is doing messaging to inform the community in accordance to CDC guidelines. I do appreciate Chair Harrington also seeing flu, RSV signage within our building. I just want to highlight one of the, maybe the silver linings of COVID is normalizing mask wearing to personal need and personal preference. And that's something that we really encourage here within the workforce, as well as just stay home if you're sick. So I don't have any quantitative information, but just qualitative information. We are hearing more of just employees just staying home. Part of that is also helpful because sometimes you may not be well enough to be in the office, but you can work and telework during that time. So the flexibility of that hybrid option is beneficial while still keeping ourselves and each other safe and hopefully healthy. I do want to provide also a brief severe weather response update and I will touch briefly on the Safe, Safe Pods. While many of us were out on holiday break, we had many employees that were working to ensure that we were in service to our community. Our region experienced severe weather starting just prior to the Christmas holiday. Our severe weather shelter system activated with two shelter locations operating for five nights, one in Hillsborough and one in Beaverton, that served a total of 51 people on average per night. In addition, outreach teams managed by the Supportive Housing Services Program made welfare checks to known encampments to get the word out, to help transport people to these shelters or to provide other support as appropriate. Regarding the Pods, I haven't heard any concerns, but staff will just double check and report back to the Board on Thursday during your monthly roundtable. So we're assuming all is well, but we'll still confirm. The biggest challenge, problem we had was needing to close the baseline Beaver Creek encampment and that was due to flooding, which your Board is aware of. It's now closed. And the last report, at least six campers were provided shelter access. All were offered the access. I also want to highlight a few of our other areas during the severe weather. Our land use and transportation crews were out in force, applying anti-icing solution ahead of the storm and working 12-hour shifts. and working twelve-hour shifts covering twenty-four hours per day from Wednesday, December twenty-first to Christmas Eve. Deputies in the sheriff's office assisted with several spinouts and other incidents throughout the event. And our electric utility partners worked to restore power to thousands of customers. I just want to express gratitude for all of these employees and partners who assist in the response to ensure that our community members are safe. And this just highlights how our community relies on our services day and night, even through inclement weather and holidays. And that concludes my update.
Well, thank you and welcome back from the holiday.
Thank you.
I have one question. Do we have free tests for employees for COVID? I mean, or is that all covered by their insurance?
Federal government has now issued a new round of test kits.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Carr.
Thank you Chair Harrington and Happy New Year to everyone. I hope everyone had a nice holiday break. I certainly did. I don't have much to report. We did receive six hundred and sixty thousand dollars on Friday as part of the opioid settlement from the Johnson and Johnson. Those funds will continue to trickle in. As you know, they've been all dedicated to the CAT project, which is ongoing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Taniguchi Dennis, hello.
Hi, thank you Chair Harrington and a very Happy New Year to the Clean Water Services Board of Directors. And like Tanya shared, the weather just didn't take a holiday break for us this year. And the team kept our twenty-four-seven operations running during the frigid temperatures, ice, snow and heavy rain to continue serving our customers. I wanted to provide the board with three highlights about the team and their dedication to service. The first one is kudos to John Allard's Field Operations Crew. They took on a emergency lateral repair during that most, the lowest temperatures of the year. And the damaged lateral could have put the customer out of service for the long holiday weekend. We were not planning to send our crews out on that day unless they were in heated cabs like our sweepers. Whoever John's crew really braved that weather, the wind and the elements to get the customer back in service. And John shared that it was the first time he had a customer cry on the phone and it was tears of appreciation and joy when he called her to let her know how things were going. So kudos to that team. The heavy rains had field operations and water resource recovery teams working around the clock. Forest Grove seemed to get a very large, sort of one of those cluster dumps of rain over the area. And it caused our Forest Grove High Head Pump Station to be overwhelmed by the flows, causing the basement of that pump station to flood and the ability of the pumps to fail. So the team worked around the clock to get that rectified. The strong wind and rains brought down trees on two staff vehicles at the ABC parking lot. And that really required speedy response from Dennis Kramer and the landscape program staff to bring in the tree specialists so we could free the cars for the employees. No one was hurt, which we're very grateful for. Both Ryan Sandu and CJ Baxter were our local incident command and they did a really excellent job leading our crews through the extreme weather and its challenges. And we're just very grateful that the weather is a little back to normal of our winter, of our normal winter weather. But that concludes my update for today.
Well, thank you, Ms. Taniguchi Dennis and Ms. Angie for helping us better understand and appreciate the work of the staff of the two agencies, particularly under severe weather circumstances. I had the opportunity to stay informed by both county email, but also social media. And I was appreciative of the information that was made as widely available as our staff could make it. So, and I'm, I really appreciate all of the hard work of all the employees and doing so, providing services while also being safe. Because we want to make sure our employees are as safe as possible as well. That's terrific.
Diana, just again, as you know, I didn't mention my update. I attended your Christmas function at the Durham plant and people there certainly seem to be a very united group of workers and it was nice to see happy faces, so thanks again for all that you do and I know Mark was there and others, so, thanks.
And I'd also like to give a shout out to those employees that stayed here in the building and stayed working while many of us were not working. So I, I really do appreciate Erin and David and others for, and Kevin that were available to, to respond to questions and issues. So it was, it was great. And well done. Thank you. Alrighty, well, we don't have to check in on our board agenda for later because we already did that. So without further ado, we'll proceed then with our topic number five. Public Health Advisory Council member appointments. Hello, Ms. Semantel. Oh, and yes, there is Marie Bowman Davis as well. And is Alex Coleman with us?
Oh, she is. Okay, wonderful. Yeah, we're just a minute ahead of schedule. Yes, if you could promote her, that would be great, Kevin.
Surprise, surprise, sometimes we are a little bit faster.
Lovely, thank you. Well, good, good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners, for the record. My name is Mira Semantel. I'm the interim director of Health and Human Services. And we are here before you today to recommend some appointments to our Public Health Advisory Council. So I will go ahead and introduce Marie Bowman Davis, who is our Public Health Division Manager. And with us online is Alex Coleman, a senior program coordinator with Public Health. And I will go ahead and turn it over to the two of them for today's presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Marie Bowman Davis, she, her, hers, Public Health Division Manager and your board's local appointed public health administrator. We are excited to bring to you today some new appointees for your consideration for the Public Health Advisory Council. And I'd like to turn it over to Alex.
Good afternoon, Alex Coleman. She, her, hers, I am the staff facilitator for the Public Health Advisory Council. So today we are putting forward two recommendations to fill positions for long-term members who are at their term limits. And so that would be Michelle Williams and Mysia Benavides. We are also putting forward a new appointment for Ames Lee Fancher to fill a current vacancy and then seeking the reappointment of David Applesheimer for a second term. Does the board have any questions or concerns about any of those candidates?
I don't see any questions from board members here. I do want to highlight though that in the packet on page fourteen of one fifty-five today, I think the information under Michelle Williams may need to be updated. Because there's Michelle Williams and then it says Rachel, Rachel, Rachel.
I know.
That's all. So before we go to act on it, that would be great.
Thank you Chair Harrington. I appreciate you noting that and we will make that change and make sure it's accurate prior to coming back for an action item.
Yeah, but based upon all the information I saw in the packet, I'm certainly comfortable with the recommendations and the work that has gone into interviewing folks as well. So thank you once again for bringing us a really great slate.
So along that, along that question, it's, there's Grace Grace, is that what you're thinking?
No.
So under, but on the new applicant's page, it says Michelle Williams.
Garcia.
Grace, excuse me, Grace Garcia. And then the, the application has got the name Grace Garcia. So that is Michelle. Correct?
I'm looking to Alex online, is that correct?
So in addition to page fourteen of fifty-five, she's referring to the table that's on page twelve for the entry of Michelle Williams, Karen Grace Garcia, and then the application.
Yeah, so it looks like there was, there's typos in the applicant profile. So we will get those fixed before the next meeting.
Thank you. We will be back on January seventeenth for an action item and incorporate those, those changes that are necessary. Thank you.
Great.
I, I wanted to add, I'm on the board, on that committee, the advisory committee. And Alex, you do a wonderful job facilitating those meetings. Just wanted to give you a shout out and appreciate all the work that you did last year and Maria is under your leadership.
Thank you Commissioner Phi.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Planning Commission appointments. And for this, I'm welcoming the LUT folks, Stephen Roberts and Todd Borkowitz.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm sorry. So good afternoon Commissioners, Stephen Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation. Todd Borkowitz is with me. He's an associate planner in our long-range planning work group. And we're here to talk today about a couple of planning appointments. One, representing or, or deference given to the Commissioner District Two rep and District Four rep. So that'll turn it over to Todd.
Thank you Stephen. Just wait for the presentation. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Todd Borkowitz, Associate Planner with the LUT Community Planning Group. And here today to discuss Planning Commission appointments for districts two and four. Next slide please. The purpose is to highlight eligible candidates for your consideration for vacancy in districts two and four. The appointees will replace long-term, long-serving PC members Jeff Petrello and Matt Wellner. Their terms will expire at the end of this month due to term limits. There are six eligible candidates shown here. Three reside in District Two and three reside in District Four. Application details are included in your packet. Upon the term expiration of Matt Wellner, there will be one current PC member engaged principally in the buying, selling and development of real estate. Applicants Mike Frey and Jared Whip, both from District Two principally perform work in this industry. So only one, but not both could be appointed to the PC at this time. Here's a map showing where applicants and current PC members reside. The map reflects recent boundary changes to the Board of Commissioner districts. We can come back to that. Based on their experience, staff recommends appointment of Mike Frey for District Two and Joe Kaiser for District Four. Each would be eligible for a four-year term starting February first and each would later be eligible for an additional four-year term. The current diversity on the PC would be maintained with these appointments at thirty-three point three percent BIPOC and forty-four point four percent women. We hope to learn whether the board is prepared to proceed with these two appointments at the scheduled January seventeenth board meeting. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Now Pam and I, Pam and I met with Stephen and Todd. And we agree with the analogy, I mean, the Planning Commission is an extremely difficult position just because of the complexity of issues. And so we just want to make sure we have good people on there and certainly we will miss the two outgoing commissioners that spend a lot of time on their ten years. Is that what you said? And certainly want to tell them thank you for their service.
I, I agree with Commissioner Willie and we went through a lot of the different candidates and looked at different mixes and there are some that have three other assignments within the county and those types of things that made it, that, that helped move the decision along aside from skills and experience.
Okay, we'll see no other comments. I'll chime in. I do really appreciate the service both of Matt Wellner and Jeff Petrello. They were very knowledgeable, very active, worked hard to gather and listen to different perspectives and do the important work that the Washington County Planning Commission does. I had the opportunity to talk with Mr. Wellner about that, the situation of their departures and missing being able to count on their tenure and their, their commitment to service. And was comforted to learn of Mr. Wellner's efforts to help recruit others. And I feel very comfortable in having you move forward with these two recommended appointments as you have heard from both Commissioners Willie and Commissioners Teresa today, so.
I, I'd also like to underscore your comments about Matt Wellner and Jeff Petrello. They, they've both been great. To, to your point, over the holiday week, one of my constituents had a retaining wall fall during a flooding situation. And he sent an email to, copied me to Todd and to Matt Wellner, asking about whose property was where. And Matt got back to him before any of us could. So it was, it was great to see that. So, so anyway, I, I appreciate their service, but they also really did together the recruitment work that will, will help us as we move forward with the plan.
I have one quick question. We used to send out little certificates of thank you. So we still do that?
We do, yes. And, and I was just going to say, Teresa, thank you. So let me a little note to remind me thankfully that we are planning to have a little send-off event for those two members on January eighteenth as a part of their work session. At the Planning Commission meeting, so we would encourage you, if you're available, to drop in and those are virtual. Okay, now what was the date again? I'm sorry. January eighteen.
Seventeenth.
Wednesday.
No, I'm sorry, it is January eighteen.
Eighteenth is Wednesday.
It is six o'clock for the celebration and then six thirty for the PC meeting.
So we'll, we'll send you. Yeah, that way if you're able to attend, yeah, I think that would be great. And yes, we do want to definitely acknowledge their ten years of service, ten plus years of service and really appreciate the, the expertise that, that they've brought and, and really just thoughtful input and not, not afraid to push back on staff too. That's, that's a good thing.
Great. Well, thank you as well to the staff efforts for handling the recruitment and application process and all of the efforts that go into broadcasting these opportunities and really our reliance upon our community members stepping forward to volunteer their time and their expertise to serve the greater community. Really appreciate it. Alrighty, well, you're off the hook now, but Mr. Roberts isn't. Because he and Greg Munn and Mira Semantel will be joining us for the next pretty meaty topic. And I will assume that we can press on moving forward with the program cost recovery proposals for land use and transportation and health and human services. And thank you for all of the information that's in the packet.
Definitely.
Yep.
All right, well, I drew the short straw today, so I'll start. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Greg Munn. I'm the Treasurer and Financial Officer for the county. And I am joined here by Stephen Roberts with the LUT and Mira Semantel from HHS. We are here to discuss options and recommendations for a fee-based cost recovery plan for the county's planning, building, services and environmental health programs. These programs provide services to specific subsets of the community and are traditionally funded on a fee-based revenue model. These programs provide services to specific subsets of the community and are traditionally funded on a fee-based revenue model with the objective of breaking even and providing stable, high-quality and customer-responsive services over time. So, uh, while our time here is short today and both LUT and HHS have a lot of material to cover, I will keep my comments brief and focused on providing the board with a few framework guideposts on the topic of government charges, fees for you to consider during the ensuing presentation from Mr. Roberts and Ms. Semantel. And as you know, the last few months, we've had several conversations regarding the redesign of our budget processes and the balancing of our general fund. So today's work session is, uh, a topic or today's work session topic is one of many key components to consider in achieving both, both of those objectives. So today's objectives, we have a few appear on the board. One is to review cost recovery best practices and policies. I'll be covering that. Then I will turn it over to, uh, Stephen, who I think is gonna go first and then, uh, Mira after that, talk about cost recovery options for LUT and HHS. And then we'll have a, we can have a couple, uh, conversations about advanced fee increases and related recommendations to achieve or move toward program cost recovery for specific regulatory services if directed by the board and then how this relates to the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Okay. So up here is a list of, uh, six bullet points that are considered best practices for fees, rates, charges established by, by government entities which would apply to us. So these six recommendations are consistent with the county's budget process redesign work and can provide the board with guideposts in considering these and future rate adjustments. So the first is to consider, uh, when developing rates and charges is to consider the applicable laws and statutes before the implementation of the specific charges and fees. That's bullet point number one. Uh, number two is to adopt formal policies regarding charges and fees that identify factors to be considered when setting price, including affordability, pricing history, inflation, alternative service delivery options and available efficiencies. Number three is calculate the full cost of providing a service in order to provide a basis for setting the charge or fee, including both direct and indirect costs and capital depreciation. Number four, review and update charges and fees periodically based on factors such as the impact of inflation costing, uh, other cost increases, adequacy of cost recovery, use of services and the competitive competitiveness at current rates. By updating fees on a periodic basis, this may help smooth charges and fees over several years. With those charged by comparable or neighboring jurisdictions can guide a governing body when setting rates. It can also differentiate service levels to reveal services or pricing variances and options. Number five, utilize long-term forecasting to ensure that the charges and fees anticipating, anticipate future costs in providing the service. This is a factor you will see in particular with LUT's analysis coming up in a few slides. And provide, number six, provide information on charges and fees to the public, including the opportunity for community feedback, particularly when new rates are introduced or when existing rates are changed. Slide number four is, uh, additionally, we do have some, uh, guidance in our, in our strategic plan, uh, the county two thousand and twenty twenty specifically state that LUT's current planning and land used, uh, land development and building programs should maintain self-sufficiency through fees. Uh, policy questions, uh, does the board support proposed fee increases and related recommendations to achieve or move toward a program cost recovery in these programs? And then just a little, uh, slide here that we've, we've, uh, sort of practiced this one Washington County method and coming together, the three of us. I'm here just to provide an overview of best practices, but the lion's share of the work. And literally I mean that is, are these two here in front of me. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Stephen unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna ask Erin Wardell to come up. Erin's actually gonna run through the LUT proposal and then Sheila.
She's over there.
Uh, and then I just wanted to point out Sheila Jambrone is our, uh, Senior Administrative Services Manager. She's the person who actually helps make sure that the department runs. Uh, and she's been very instrumental in this work too. So I wanted to make sure that we, you know, that she's here in case there are questions that she can help to answer as well as we go through this. Thanks.
Thanks, Stephen. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the Planning and Development Services Division Manager in LUT. So our first slides here are a bit of a review from our work session in December where we shared with you the results of our consultant fee assessment that we've been conducting over the last several years. So this slide contains a summary of the work that we do, which is providing some of our necessary life safety, um, functions. We protect people. We reduce costs and damages in case of disasters. And we support communities and businesses. Who pays for this work? Um, our customers pay fees in order to support the work that we do. And we have a challenge now that our fees are not covering the actual cost of administering our programs. So that's the challenge that we face today. Over time, our fee increases have not kept up with the cost of providing these services. We also have seen changes in the types of development that we have coming in the door. And so we're not seeing as many of the large projects that pay very large fees. And that's impacted our overall, uh, fund balance. So the impact of this challenge has been reduced staffing. Our existing staff are feeling pretty overloaded and we've had to reduce our service levels and depleted our reserves. So we've taken a number of actions to date to try to resolve these challenges. We did, um, do incremental fee increases in fiscal years twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-three. We have reduced our staff, uh, primarily through attrition and being very careful about which vacancies we fill when we have vacancies on our teams. We have taken on other cost-saving measures as much as possible in our budgets. And then we conducted this independent assessment, which you heard about back at the December work session, to really take a look at our workflows and develop recommendations for sustainable service levels and funding. We've also conducted ongoing stakeholder engagement with our community members. We've been working with your board and with our development constituents as well over the last several years. So coming out of the work that our consultant conducted for us, we received the assessment recommendations that are summarized on this slide. The consultant identified opportunities for process improvements and how we do our work. And we've implemented a number of those already and are looking forward to implementing more of those. Those are things like, um, looking at various ways to, uh, manage the work that we have to do with reduced staffing. We have implemented changes to how we do building permit intake. For example, in order to be able to do them more efficiently, we are allowing for concurrent review, which is an opportunity for our builders to move their projects through our system a little bit faster. Um, and we're also considering future technology upgrades. So things like allowing our customers to directly submit their permits through our system, um, and other opportunities to use technology to really be able to make the most of our system. So we continue to look at that. On the staffing side, we've been looking very strategically at filling our budgeted vacancies in order to be able to keep up with the workload, but not overstaffing. And we've been looking at opportunities for sustainable funding. So the recommendation here coming out of this work was to implement a catch-up fee increase because we've fallen significantly behind in keeping up with our costs. To do a future annual fee increase based on the program cost index so that we don't end up in this situation again, and we're able to keep up with costs as they're increasing. And that'll help us avoid the need for a big increase in the future. That type of consistent annual increase is in keeping with best practices. It also allows us to, um, avoid surprises for our customers. They know that there will be an annual adjustment and they know to expect that. Another recommendation is to implement a technology fee in order to keep up with the costs of the critical systems that we need and that our customers rely on. The recommendation also included slowly restoring our depleted funds so that we continue to maintain reserves in case we need them in the future as these are our cycles that we need to be able to weather. The consultant also recommended that we consider external funding for activities and current planning that are not generating revenue. So this is a summary of what those recommendations were and some of the work we've already done on them. As a part of the consultant recommendations, we shared with you some scenarios for increases and scenarios for staffing levels. Coming out of that work, um, their work was based on fiscal year twenty, twenty-one trends. And so we updated it to reflect what we're currently seeing as far as development activity and what we see over the next couple of years. And so that revised some of the key assumptions. We use the same methodology. We just wanted to make sure we were using the most updated numbers to run these scenarios. So while things are still somewhat fluid, um, we're seeing that development activity is trending down. And so we expect that to continue at least in the next year possibly. Um, that has some effect on the assumptions about the number of staff that we need basically to keep up with the workload. And so that does affect the numbers that we generated. We'll need to fill fewer of our vacant positions if development activity is slower. So that's one of the ways that changes those numbers. But we do expect that personnel and indirect costs will continue to increase going into the future. So we're still seeing a need for, um, increases in the fees. So with lower revenue estimates, we need to increase our revenues to offset the increased cost of maintaining our staffing levels. Plus the cost of filling a few essential vacancies that exist on our teams today. So we still do see the need to add some staff to still, to fill some of those vacancies. Um, additionally, with ongoing general fund constraints, we anticipate that the development-related functions and current planning still need to remain self-sufficient going into the future and that we wouldn't expect to see a substantial increase. We do receive an annual three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar general fund and video lottery contribution, and that pays for our code compliance functions within current planning. So we did not in our scenarios expect that we would see more, which means that current planning's fees need to keep up with additional costs for things that are not related to development. So for developing our cost recovery proposals, our objective is to continue to provide good service to the community and consistently meet our targeted service levels to catch up with our past program cost increases that outpaced our prior fee increases. To assure full cost recovery for both of these programs for their development-related activity and to adjust our fees annually based on our program cost changes. This gives us the ability over time to stabilize, restore and maintain our depleted fund balances. So our cost recovery proposals came to the conclusion that we need to increase our fees by about fifty percent over the next two years in order to catch up with our past cost increases and put us in a stable position going forward into the future. We are proposing to implement an annual fee index so that we'll be able to keep up with projected program cost increases in the future and to provide that certainty to our community and avoid these large unexpected fee increases. We propose to implement a technology surcharge and we're estimating that would be five to seven percent on permanent application fees in addition to allow us to support critical hardware and software upgrades and to stabilize and gradually restore, um, our reserve funds over time. So this slide summarizes three different options for how we can achieve that fifty percent cost increase over the next two years. We looked at, um, these three different scenarios in depth. Then we ran a variety of different numbers. Again, this is assuming that development activity will be slowing over that time period. So we baked that into the assumptions. In the top box, looking at a fifty percent increase in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, we would be able to budget for both programs. They'll break even in twenty-three, twenty-four. We would be able to add a half FTE within current planning and one and a half FTEs in building services. This is really similar to the forty-ten option, which is the next one, and that is our staff recommendation. So we would do a forty percent increase twenty-three, twenty-four, and then a ten percent potential increase, um, in twenty-four, twenty-five in order to get us to that fifty percent amount. This would allow both programs to break even in twenty-four, twenty-five. The fund balances for both programs are projected to remain adequate to develop balanced budgets for those fiscal years. And this would again allow us to add that half FTE in current planning and one and a half in building services. Now, the third option we looked at is doing a thirty-five percent increase twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the fifteen percent increase the year after that. This scenario is more challenging for us. It would make it challenging particularly for current planning to be able to break even in this next budget year. So it's a scenario that we'd have to be really careful with and play with a little bit more before we could get to there. That's why it's not our staff recommendation. And it would not allow us to add any additional staff positions in either program, but now we've identified the need for those additional staff. Um, the scenarios also differ in how quickly we'll be able to restore our depleted reserve funds. And you'll see that in some of the next graphs as well. Um, in any case, we're being pretty conservative in these numbers and it will take us a while to restore our depleted fund balances. Um, so in all three scenarios, we did assume that after the initial one or two-year catch-up in large increases, we'll be doing an annual increase of some sort and we'll have to figure out what we will base that program cost index on. We did assume that current planning would continue to receive the three hundred and twenty-five thousand each year for code enforcement activities that it has typically received. And we assumed that technology surcharge would be included in there as well. So these next, these next two slides look at what these, uh, financial projections look like going out through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year. And so what you're seeing on this slide is our current planning, um, fund balance. So the bar chart lines here are our reserve account. And so you can see how we've drawn down that reserve account over time. And with this, this is looking at that forty percent, ten percent increase scenario. You can see that gradually over time, we start to build back up our reserves. It's not dramatic. It's gonna take us a long time to build that reserve account back up, but this does give us the breathing room to be able to do that. And you can see that we're projected to break even in twenty-four, twenty-five in this fund. And then this is the same, uh, type of chart, but this is for our building services team. And so again, you're seeing that that fund balance is able to build itself back up over time gradually. And we're projected to break even in twenty-four, twenty-five. We did run these numbers in comparison to comparable jurisdictions. You saw some of similar slides to these in our presentation on December sixth. So looking at how we compare to some of our partner jurisdictions. The light green line here is our current residential building permit fee for, an example, twenty-six hundred square foot, single-family home in this case. So you can see the light green line. We were running relatively middle of the pack and that these proposed fee increases would put us generally at the top um, for this particular type of building activity. But we are attempting a really high level of cost recovery there. This next slide shows us the commercial building permit fees. We're not actually the highest in this one. City of Gresham outpaces us a little bit in terms of the cost, but we're also not out of line with some of the other jurisdictions who are summarized here. And then in current planning, uh, there's a little bit of an important note on this one, which is that the jurisdictions that have a star next to their name are jurisdictions that attempt a high level of cost recovery for current planning rather than a large subsidy from some other funding source. It's fairly common for jurisdictions to heavily subsidize their current planning activity, um, which we don't and some other jurisdictions don't do either, at least not at that high of a level. But I think the others are more at seventy-five percent of current planning activity and we've tried to be closer to a hundred percent. So for a typical current planning fee, uh, set for a ten-lot subdivision with one street, this is where we fall compared to other jurisdictions. We are not as high as City of Beaverton where we would be comparable to Malnoma County and to City of Gresham under this scenario. So indexing and fund balance policies. So developing an annual fee index policy, we would be looking at, um, developing a program cost index, which would be subject to continued refinement in consultation with our finance department. And this would be based on the actual program costs, including all direct and indirect costs. We would be looking at potential minimum and maximum increases each year. So somewhat of a range, perhaps there, you know, couldn't be a negative increase in cost, but also we wouldn't want to go over some percentage amount either. That's fairly typical with funds that do some kind of an index increase. Um, so this is something we'd be looking at developing more policies around. We are working with finance to formalize our reserve and fund balance target policies as well. Reserve funds are really essential for enterprise fund programs similar to these because we have boom and bust cycles. And sometimes you need to use your reserves and sometimes you build up your reserves. And so we want to make sure that we are resilient. Um, both of our reserve funds have been spent down considerably over the last few years. So next steps for LUT, we are continuing to refine and prepare our current planning and building services fee schedules as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four. We are continuing to refine and prepare our current planning and building services fee schedules as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process. We're reviewing current and future anticipated costs for hardware, software, and staff needed to support our and enhance our critical technology systems, and that's our estimate for incorporating a technology surcharge. We're working to develop and finalize policies for annual fee indexing and reserve fund balance targets. We're also doing ongolder, ongoing stakeholder outreach around this work that we've been doing. So we've been working with the Home Building Association and with our LUT Development Forum participants. We have scheduled a meeting on January nineteenth, the listening session around this work, and we'll be inviting those partners to join us for that and come and ask us questions about this work. Um, we're also meeting individually with the small cities who we provide building services to. So we already had our meeting with the City of Banks. I think we're meeting with City of Gaston tomorrow and looking at getting something scheduled to North Plains in the next few days as well. So um, reaching out and having an opportunity to talk to them. We continue to work on our internal process improvements. One of the things we wanted to highlight for you is that we're working with Portland State University to do a training on cultivating an improvement mindset and building up our internal staff capabilities around process improvement. And so we have a number of staff enrolled in um that process improvement course, which is starting next week. We do need to act now in order to keep these programs financially solvent. We're not in a good position right now. And we've put off the large increases that we've needed for a number of years. So the time is now. We're trying to balance this need for urgency with the needs of our customers and their expectations for knowing how much their permits and their development fees are going to cost them. We don't expect that we will be able to balance the budget for current planning in twenty-three, twenty-four without at least a forty percent fee increase. So that's why this is a critical situation. We're also not alone in dealing with these challenges. A number of other jurisdictions are facing exactly what we're facing today. City of Beaverton recently increased their planning fees by two hundred and fifty percent. City of Gresham is working towards a fifty percent increase over time as well. So that's just two examples, but other jurisdictions are doing this along with us. And we know that flexibility remains important. We're keeping an eye on trends. We're keeping an eye on how much staffing we actually need and trying to do the best we can with all of the internal levers that we can, we can pull. Um, but we really can't move forward without doing something pretty significant in terms of the increase at this time.
Could I thank you? Could I take a pause here for just a moment because I'm uh thinking because of non-verbal um body language that I'm concerned that if we hold all questions until the end uh versus take LUT questions and HHS questions that we might be tipping the scales a little bit for ourselves. So that's why I wanted to ask you, Ms. Angie, for some advice.
Chair, I think that's very appropriate because this is really the second conversation the board is having on LUT. Today will be the first conversation on HHS.
Yeah.
So that will be really all new material compared to you. We've been talking about um these fees, I know, since I started the company. So this has been an ongoing discussion.
Yes, indeed. So what I would like to do is um call the board's attention to um next steps and um policy questions. So uh today you've given us uh some staff recommendations for LUT. And uh no matter where we end up with picking for each category of current planning and um building services for adopting those new fees, would that would we need to weigh in formally at a business meeting or will that be done as part of the, but I finally found it on page one thirty-seven of one fifty-five. Thank you. Um, so the next steps would be to refine the fee schedules and developing the budgets. Uh, and but will all of that uh will all this come back to us as part of the budget or will there be a separate action for adopting the fee structures before we adopt the the next fiscal year budget?
Um, so I will speak to typically, and then I will speak to the situation in and of itself. So typically, the board does adopt a uh full fee schedule as part of your formal budget adoption process. As this is, uh, we would be um reaffirming the fee philosophy in this case that um it is a cost recovery fee and due to the level of fee, I would suggest that we have board action prior to the budget, just as a thumbs up, kind of give, give staff direction to move forward. The reason why is because um as um the team has already indicated, we are working with multiple stakeholders that really want to understand what, what are going to be, what, what's projected to be the fees moving forward so that they can do their due diligence and plan. So out of the spirit of partnership and being a good partner to our stakeholders, that's why I would suggest a board action sooner than waiting for the full budget process in this case.
Okay. Well, with that as a common baseline, commissioners, what questions do you have and what comments do you have with regard to these two LUT proposals? Who would like to start?
You can start.
Great.
Couple of uh comments. Uh, one, uh you would think as a business person, I always detest increases in fees. As I said, I think we ought to increase our fees to match what our costs are. So I'm not as alarmed as you might think I would be. So I, I certainly understand that process. Maybe an enhancement would be is to uh also indicate the amount of cost containment we're doing. Because the proposal, you, you have little bits and pieces. But one of the charges against government is, you know, every time you have a little bit of a downturn, you want to raise fees and you're not tightening your belt. And I think you are in this process. So I, I think if you could, you know, uh, talk about that a bit more as you make the proposal later on, that, you know, here's what we're doing, just not all raising fees. The second point I would make is one of the complaints I've heard from cities over many years is that they don't want to be in a bidding war for projects with the county. And these uh fee increases actually make us uh as far as the fee very comparative what the cities are doing. And so I find that particularly appealing because I think that makes some sense. So uh, my, my position, I, I'm not opposed to the fee increases at all. I think that if you could enhance your conversation a little bit to say, but we are doing lots of cost containment and here's what we're doing. And uh, and you heard my comment on the other, so.
Giving the body language over to my right two commissioners, could you go next?
Why'd you see me writing notes here?
No, no, I heard every side of each of you during the course of this too.
Well, this is um to me, and I've had this conversation with Stephen and I appreciate him doing it on the holiday. So let me just start with some base stuff. So these, the forty percent fees that you're proposing is assuming a baseline of services that we will continue to provide. So is that this year's service level, last year's service level? Because you and I've had the conversation of um if we're really talking about a recession, you know, those things are going to go down. So are we, are you going to be, if those things, if that would happen in the twenty-three, twenty-four, you're going to come back next year and say, oops, you know, it's not another ten percent, it's going to be another twenty-five percent. So I just want to know what our baseline of service, projected service delivery that, that we're increasing forty percent.
Um, that, that's a, an excellent question. And I think uh we've, we've had, we've had service level targets, some, some of which are established in the building code, some of which are statutory for current planning. And so we, we have certain mandatory timelines that we have to meet. So we'll obviously continue striving to meet those. In addition, we have a number of internal um service level targets, which are again all mostly time-based. So we, we anticipate trying to provide a, a continued high level of service that meets the same same, or in some cases, hopefully better uh service levels that we've been providing over a long period of time. Um, and as you say, this is sort of uh, it's a multivariate equation and nothing's ever static, unfortunately. That's one of our challenges with trying to project forward. So uh, as you, as Aaron noted, we've, we've made some assumptions about uh declining development activity, but maintaining or even slightly enhancing our staffing levels. And so between the, the reduced development activity and some very targeted additions to staffing, we think that we will have the resources available to be able to meet those target service levels consistently going forward. As I said, there are a lot of assumptions here and those assumptions are all subject to change as we get further in and learn more over the next year. So I would say, you know, one of Aaron's points was that flexibility will be important as we go forward. We're projecting the best information that we have now and um our, our um certainly our strong intention to meet uh those service level targets. And we just need to, you know, be aware that there are a lot of things that can change between now and next year. So to your, to the second part of your question about might we come back and ask for something bigger next year, I, I would say that could be a possibility, but we hope that we've been relatively conservative in these projections and, and don't need to go higher than ten percent next year.
Okay. I think it needs to be more clearly emphasized rather than an asterisk that this forty percent does not include your technology fee. So we're really talking of forty-five to forty-seven percent. So the five to seven percent technology fee, you're anticipating is going to generate how much money? And how did you come up? What was, did that come from the consulting uh organization as well as you need to have X amount of dollars of technology? Because I'm not opposed to a technology fee. It, it feels a little heavy right now. If you'd asked us maybe for that last year and it was a five to seven percent increase, I could have got that, but forty plus five is a little hefty. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of you.
Yeah, no, no, th- those are excellent questions. And I think that's one of the, the things that we're certainly conscientious of. And so we're, we're trying to make some distinctions about the fees for the, the basic service that we provide. So that gets to the forty and ten percent proposal. And then the technology, again, in addition, that's a fairly substantial cost to uh, to continue to uh not just uh look for upgrades to those systems, but really even just the maintenance of the system that we have. Um, that does require full-time dedicated support. So we do have some real costs associated with that. And so um other jurisdictions have also implemented technology fees. It's a, it's a one way of just sort of being transparent about the need to provide and adequately fund that service in addition to just the specifically the development-related services you provide. So we're in the process right now of really taking a hard look at what our current ongoing operating costs are relative to our, our technology support. And then we are also in the process of looking at some technology, specific technology upgrades that we hope, as uh Aaron was alluding to, would help us to facilitate a, a more seamless customer interface and allow customers to actually submit their permit applications and help, help to minimize the amount of staff time that uh we need to engage with folks. And then we're, we're hopeful that that just provides a, a much more seamless customer interface too. So we're trying to sort of look at, again, just those ongoing operational costs and then some potential targeted future technology upgrades. And that was how we'll get back to a s- a specific percentage.
So what's, what's five percent generate? Do you know at the top here? I mean, if you don't know right now, then
Yeah, we'll follow up.
An email.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the number would be off the top.
Yeah, okay. Um, then just real quickly, slide nineteen. Uh, jurisdiction fee comparison, the, we, that is a huge variance in there.
Yes.
What, what causes that? So I guess my question is, do those uh like Clackamas and Hillsborough being on the low end of this thing? Does that just mean they subsidize these?
They heavily subsidize from other funding sources.
Okay.
They also have a much smaller UU way to deal with too.
That's, that's true. And I, thank you for that, uh, Catherine, because I have to keep my head around the fact that this is just our unincorporated areas. And that was my question about had you had these conversations with our small cities out there, Gaston, Banks, and North Plains? Because we provide these services for them and certainly uh will impact their uh service level as well. So go ahead, I'm sorry, Erin.
We provide the building services to those small cities. And so in our conversation with City of Banks, um they were supportive of the work that we'd been doing and certainly understood how we got here. And they thanked us for the work that the county does for them. And they really gave their appreciation for the good work that our, our building inspectors and our plans reviewers, our permit text dude for them.
Right.
And, and stress their, their uh need for us to continue to provide that service.
Well, yeah, a- absolutely. I, I don't think that's really an option that they can take their ball and go someplace else. It's uh we're the only game in town for it, really. So I get that, but I want to be really sensitive to having that communication, making sure they're tracking with us.
Absolutely.
They might be able to have uh other nearby cities provide that service, but it's going to cost more money.
Yep.
So uh, we're, I think it's fair to say we're probably the least cost alternative.
That could be quite possible, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that as we, as we talk about, yes, uh, you know, cities providing services outside their jurisdictional boundaries, you know, they're going to need to recover full costs to do that work. And so I think that's your point, Chair, is that those costs may actually even be higher than
Yeah.
that what we're finding ours to be. And I, and I think as a relatively large program, we, we hopefully, I think, achieve some cost effectiveness just, just by the size of the program itself.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Tree's thoughts?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, I, as, as we look at this, I've under, I understand the, the situation and I appreciate uh Stephen, you talking to me about this offline and increasing my level of understanding. Um, I think that it's important as we do this with our customers that we do have, and I believe this is what you were getting at, kind of a guaranteed service level as well, so that, you know, we're going to do this, but you can expect this. And I think that that's really important. The other comment I want to make is that um looking at the chart on page fourteen, the um, your recommendation is the forty percent increase in year one and the ten percent increase in year two. And I'm hoping that through your discussions with other users that um you have the option to ask them if, if they might prefer the fifty percent now and just get it over with. And instead of going forty percent and then ten percent and then another percent, because you, this is ten plus whatever the increase might be, right? I mean, so, so I'm just thinking that they may have a different viewpoint on that. So I would encourage that. The other thing that I'm just going to state this for, for the public here, when I was talking to Stephen yesterday, we were um, we were talking about the uh, the term catch-up. And the, I just don't want it to be at all misleading that we are not, this increase doesn't have anything to do with filling a void that might have been previous in our, in our, in our revenue structure. So this is catching up, in other words, with the, the, the amount the fee is, not any deficit that may have been there in the past. So I
It's a systems catch-up, I thought.
Yes, it absolutely is. But I'm just saying, when you use the term catch-up, when I looked at it, I'm thinking about it from a public standpoint, I was worried that people might think we were using new fees based on a forty percent or fifty percent increase to pay for lost revenue previously. That's what I was worried about. It's just, it's
It's not a backfill.
It's not a backfill, thank you.
Right, right. It's, yeah, and, and I appreciated that observation. I, I, I think we've used the term quite a lot and that wasn't an interpretation that had occurred to us that, that uh it could be seen that way. But the idea is that we're not trying to refill our depleted coffers.
Oh, you're right. Bring revenue in line with cost increase.
Exactly. So when we say catch-up, we're really talking
So it's a fee alignment.
Yeah.
Fee alignment, I like that.
Probably a good term.
And I'm just, I'm, the reason I, I bring it up in this setting is that I'm, I'm worried that others might be watching this and not think, not understand that this is the fee that's increasing
Correct.
for the services provided.
Yeah. And we really are looking at right sizing the fee to the staffing that it requires to do the necessary work and then right sizing all of our operations and processes as well. Those are my comments.
But there, uh, okay, no, that was the surcharge. Okay. Commissioner Fai, how about you?
Great presentation. I think a lot of good questions have been asked and this is our second time. Something triggered my allergies. So I've been like quietly sneezing here for, I don't know, the last thirty minutes. But I'm okay now. I think it's calming down. The mask is helping. Um. I, I think of the question I had, um, great presentation, Aaron. I'm wondering, um. And I was thinking about like last time you came here and did the presentations. There's going to be an impact to the developers to these feature. And then there's impact to our residents as well. Who apply our services and have to pay. I'm wondering if there's going to be, next time you come back, I didn't notice it in your next steps. Is there going to be an equity analysis, uh, of what the impact will look like to between the different groups? But so far, so good.
That is something we've talked about, and I know that was brought up before. Um, we have talked about looking through our fees in terms of line items. And finding out if any are, um. Going to be in a way out of proportion with how much work that actually requires. And then if there's in some kind of an equity concern with that particular use. Or fee that somebody would need to pay. And so we've done a little bit of that work already. We do have a hardship, um, relief program available to people, which hasn't been used very much. But it is something that is possible for people. If they can show a certain income level, then they can pay a reduced rate. For some of, some of our development activities. Um, and then additionally, we have talked about. It come up in other venues where we've talked about this, is things like regulated affordable housing and different opportunities for how we can help to reduce that burden. Um, and this may not be necessarily the vehicle to do that, because again, we know we just need to match this with the level of staffing. That we need in order to perform the activities. But I think these are all really good points to consider and certainly something we can do some more research on.
Thank you. Uh, the other thing I was wondering. Was around your third bullet point around developing a draft policies for annual fee indexing and fund balance targets. And I, I guess it applies to all these, uh, your next steps is when. So this is just a curious question. You probably have it planned out and figured out the answer, but I'm wondering in my head. Is there, when do we notify this is happening to the people that this is going to happen to? And is, what's the timeline? By the time it comes to our board, is there an engagement? Process that happens to communicate to, about this coming. And that way, and then it comes to us. So is there?
Yeah. So if you go to slide 21, please. And this one's titled O U T next steps. So after today, getting feedback from your board, um, and we would refine, take, take all this feedback in. Develop, work on developing policies. Commissioner, if I think what you're speaking to is the.
Yeah, I saw that, like, I'm just.
The ongoing stakeholder.
Yeah.
Stakeholder outreach, we would move directly into that and then bring this back to your board prior to the budget.
Okay.
Or, um, it wouldn't be part of the fee schedule, but kind of. We got to work on the.
Might have been out of the room when we went over this earlier. No, I said, okay, yeah, I saw that.
So that we can, we can circle back with the development community and other stakeholders on the fee adjustment, um. Before, um, June.
Okay, that's what I, I was wondering. I saw that bullet point, but I was wondering like exactly how was it going to happen? Thank you.
So that listening session you talked about is January 19th?
Yes.
Yep. And you talked about, uh, continuing conversations. Particularly with regard to the building services provided to the three local communities as well. So, uh, that in between our meeting today and our direction today. You would continue to refine the, um, the fee schedule, continue to do the refinement. Of the technology surcharge, uh, work on the annual fee indexing. So you're going to be coming back and getting our thumbs up on all of that. Uh, before you go through the remainder of your budget development. So that's a lot of work in the next couple of months.
It is. Yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, and our budgets are due in early February. So we're really focusing on trying to move forward. Quickly and efficiently.
Yep, yep. Okay, well, um, I have a different page, uh, for starting my questions and it's on. Slide 10. Which is the L U T assessment recommendation. And I think I had the same question. At our December work session, uh, with a consultant and either don't remember the answer or I still don't get it. It's under sustainable funding, the last bullet. Considering ongoing external funding support for current planning functions that do not generate fee revenue. I don't get it.
What slide is them?
It's slide 10.
The one up on the screen?
So there are a number of activities that current planning staff do that are not directly related to a particular development application. That's things like folks calling and saying, what is the zoning on my property? Can I, uh, build an A D U in my backyard? Can I expand my garage? And what are my setback requirements? Just kind of general, uh, customer assistance type questions. People oftentimes walk in and want to ask a question at the counter. Because that time, the staff person is spending is not connected to a particular development activity. We don't charge the person on the phone $100 to ask that question. For example, um, that ends up not being a fee generating activity. Because of that, many jurisdictions do heavily subsidize their current planning activity. And that's what we saw on that jurisdiction comparison chart. The consultant recommended it because it is generally a best practice for jurisdictions, because some of those activities don't generate costs. And so it was recommended. We however, know that that just hasn't been the paradigm here at the county. Current planning has been fee supported in the past. And so while it was recommended. That's not something that we built into our, uh, budget scenarios going forward. Other than the code enforcement subsidy that we've received in the past and assumed we would continue to receive in the future.
Okay. Okay. Alrighty, so, um. Thank you for helping me get that. Uh, so as you've noted here, but noted a little lightly. We've taken actions to date on the incremental fee increases in two prior fiscal years. A lot of, this is go, goes towards the comment that in my words, it's telling the story. Commissioner Rogers highlighted. We've done a lot of work. This should not be a surprise to anyone that we're having to increase fees. Because for those two fiscal years, we went through these uncomfortable conversations. Put those reserve funds into action to navigate through difficult times and waters. The long and short of it though, is that we've burned through those. Costs are higher than current revenue schedules and we have to make changes. So I just want to, uh, support, uh, my colleagues', uh, message. Of telling that story of how far we've come. And where we find ourselves, because you have practiced that cost containment. And you and all the members of the team have really, uh. Stepped up to the plate, have put in that extra pound of flesh. And I don't want staff to be carrying the impact any longer. I don't want people to be overloaded any longer. I don't want staff morale to be low. Because of our inability to put cost coverage into practice. So this is where I have a little bit of difficulty with the. Staff recommended 40%, 10%. Because we've, we've gone the incremental route. And I think. If for no other reason than to our staff, that we, the board, have to send. A clear signal that it is a new era now. Thank you for bearing with. Thank you for trying to provide cost coverage as we looked to minimize. Cost impacts to the building industry, to constituents over these past two budget years. But we can't do that any longer. And this will be a little softer or a little better received through. That story of cost containment actions to date that you've already, that. You have already, um, implemented, um, but that others may not be as familiar with. So towards this theme of a clean new era. I believe strongly that we need to do this to support our workforce in L U T. But also for our workforce across the agency. And to send the clear signal. So at a, much like Commissioner Tree's mentioned, at a minimum. I. And see myself supporting the 4010, I would prefer. The 50% increase because. I believe we must imple- implement these F T E increases. And we must get the programs at break even. We've already tried to soften it for two years. And we just can't keep doing that. So that's my preference, but I realize you're going to go through some additional outreach. And I appreciate the specific suggestion that Commissioner Tree's made. And frankly, um, I am. I don't think we can, um. I appreciated your answer on to Commissioner Phi's question on equity analysis. I'd see no way for us to delay any, any fees. Uh, I really don't. I appreciate the next steps you're going to go through. And my last comment is to something that was touched on and is assumed. But I feel is independent of these fee schedules. And it is for, uh, the utilization of general fund revenues. As I believe sourced through gain share and S I P funds of 325 K per year for code enforcement. This board has not had the opportunity to weigh in on, uh, gain share S I P. Policy investment decisions. We have been in a position of just continuing. What was decided on. Over five years ago.
And sure that, that code compliance funding, it's, uh, it's about $25,000 from the general fund and about 300,000 from video lottery.
Okay, okay. Right, no, it's from video lottery. Great. But I want to make sure that this board has the opportunity to go over those gain share S I P. Funds. Uh, I know our hands are tied in terms of the revenue bond coverage for. The, um, event center. But I believe we do need to revisit the policy direction and make sure. That we have. A direction that is applicable for the 2020s that we find ourselves in. We may stick with the same thing. But we still need to have the opportunity. So don't mean to add another budget item to it. But I'm hoping at a minimum through our roundtables, we'll have bandwidth for that.
Um, I can maybe do a little bit better than your roundtable. On January 10th, we do have, uh, gain share time held.
Woo-hoo.
Um, for finance and government relations to come back before your board and we'll be bringing that information as a first review, a first discussion. I think what your question also, um, does, um, bring up is just how has the county spent its lottery funds in the past? I mean, various funding sources that, um, through, um, uh, the budget position we find ourselves in. I think all of those funding sources need to look at and what priorities and, um. Revenues expenditures we've used in the past.
Yep, yeah, there's been a lot of earmarking versus using a one Washington County approach. So. Uh, we may choose to continue some, some, uh, aspects, uh, on an interim. Year-to-year basis until we get to our larger strategy, uh, which will, will take a while. So that covers, covers my thoughts on L U T as well. So, um. I believe you've gotten direction from a majority to move forward with.
Uh, just to follow up on something that you said, uh, and the Pam said on the, the 50% all at once, I'd like to see what that snapshot looks like. I candidly refer to that as ripping the Band-Aid off. So, um, so I'd be like, I'd like to see what. How that changes some of your planning in here, because you're going to get the 10% early. Um, and then, um.
I thought they covered that.
I didn't, I didn't see something where they went 50%.
Yeah.
It's not in the charts.
Not in the slideshow, but in the memo that's attached from L U T, you'll, you'll see, um, both for current planning and building. We, we showed similar charts for the 50%, the 4010 and the 35.
I apologize, I did not know that. So that is on what page of the report?
Oh.
One thirty-eight and one thirty-nine are the charts.
Okay.
It really has to deal with, uh, break even. Timeframes is the most notable, uh, because for me, it comes from a standpoint of resiliency. And as a side note, I pulled out the prior budget, uh, summaries that had the, the recession curves. And looking at, uh, yes, we've had inflation, right? That's hitting us in terms of our costs. But I also thought about the different types of recessions that we've had. Because economists have projected that we'll have previously that we, previous to the COVID recession. Right? That we would have more frequent but smaller recessions as had previously. So I was able to go back to the 1990s model that's in there. Sorry, I left the sheet upstairs on my desk. As that reminder page for myself, because my brain doesn't have room for everything. Um, and so that's another reason why. Yes, even though with the annual index fee, even with the technology fee, I felt that. Implementing that additional 10% sooner rather than later might minimize that increase over time. So, but I.
Okay.
I'm not saying I'm dead set on one or the other, but rather want to get feedback and, um. And, and have that option still open for the next step.
Okay, I will take a look then at that document. I'm not a big fan of 140-page documents, but. Um, and then just one other thing is, uh, back in the nineties, uh, our CPA firm implemented a technology fee. It was a flat-based fee. It was X amount of dollars per tax return. And you considered a flat rate fee that reverses the five to seven percent? I mean, obviously you've got a targeted dollar amount that you think you need to get to. What would that look like if we did a flat-based fee? It isn't for, for me, it's easier. To look at that and say, okay, I get that, rather than, well, wait a minute, I got this jammungus project. And so it's going to generate. Bazillion dollars of fees and I got 5% added on that. So I mean, I don't know, maybe it would work, maybe it wouldn't, but just, just a thought.
Well, certainly something we can look at a little bit more.
That's all. Thank you, Chair.
I appreciated how you, um, you gave us the example of, uh, 10-unit. The line. Yes, yeah. So.
Remembers, I must have looked at this. Way too much.
We're trying to understand.
This is a lot.
Power of the work that you've all brought forward to us, so.
Well, we very much appreciate your attention to this. We know you have many competing priorities and, and, uh. So we.
So that's it on part one.
Yeah, can I just make one last comment before we move on? I just want to express appreciation and many of you had said, um. recognize staff during this. And I just want to take a moment to recognize the LUT staff, both from leadership and all of the employees on these teams who have been working through some really turbulent times, working through the assessment, a degree of uncertainty that has got, brought us to this really kind of important moment to design the future and where we're going. So just thank you for your leadership and I do want to ensure that they have worked significantly on cost containment and also process improvement. So just huge kudos and I'm sure you'll take that back to the team. We will, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You bet. So onward to Health and Human Services, the Environmental Health Program.
We take five before we jump into this.
Uh, actually, why don't we reconvene at three?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone for bearing with us. Sorry, Mira.
It was a fake.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thumbs Up Clerk Moss. So we're back for the program cost recovery proposals. This time, part two, or I refer to it as part two of two parts. The Health and Human Services Environmental Health Program. Welcome, Mira Semanto and Marie Bowman Davis.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. So again, my name is Mira Semanto, Interim Director of Health and Human Services. With me, I have Marie Bowman Davis, our Public Health Division Manager. I also want to note some subject matter experts in the audience to support with any Q and A at the end. So we have John Kawaguchi, who's our Environmental Health Services Supervisor, sitting in the back. We also have Nor Delon, our HHS Administrative Services Manager. So if you have specific questions later, I might be calling on them to support us as well.
Don't worry.
There you go.
Don't let LUT be any indication. This is the place for us to sort through questions and answers. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Chair. So today, I just want to note that we are providing a really high level overview of our proposed proposed cost recovery. Let me just, sorry, let me get to the correct slide here. There we go. A very high level overview of our cost recovery option for environmental health program fees for fiscal year 23 to 24. So for your reference and for the public's awareness, I do want to call attention to your board agenda packet. And I know it's a lengthy packet, as we talked about earlier. But there is a memo from our staff and a final report from Marina and Company, which is our consultant that we've been working with that provides further detail on the background and process for this fee proposal that we'll be reviewing today. So the extra details in there, we do hope that today's presentation will answer most of your questions. But again, we welcome those opportunities for clarification and to work through any questions you have as we go along. I'm going to turn it over to Marie, who's going to start us off with kind of our background and fee setting landscape.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. For the record, Marie Bowman Davis, she her hers, Public Health Division Manager and your board's appointed local public health administrator. So here in Washington County, Oregon, you, this Washington County serves as the local public health authority. And as such, has statutory responsibilities, including licensure of, excuse me, tourist accommodations, licensure of pools and spas and restaurant licensure, including mobile units and the machines. And so as part of the duties of the LPA, the Board of County Commissioners, your board serves as the local, the governing body of the LPA. And under these duties, you have the ability to adopt schedules of fees for public health services that are reasonably calculated to not exceed the cost of the services performed. Adoption of the fees occur typically during the county budget process. Approved fees are collected by the Environmental Health Program in the Public Health Division of the Department of Health and Human Services. So up to today, up to this fiscal year, our existing methodology and tool for fee setting within environmental health predates our current staff. And over time, there's been a loss of institutional knowledge related to the fee setting methodology. Therefore, this past year, Health and Human Services took their challenges and their understanding of fee schedules and how they're produced and contracted with Marina and Company. This has helped us to develop a new tool with available data and how to determine any cost recovery and help us better project with impacts such as the COVID-19 pandemic. So our new tool, as Mira mentioned, is available in the summary, sorry, the report about the tools available in the memo. There are several spreadsheets and this tool was conducted through an independent assessment of the Environmental Health Program to determine appropriate fees, to capture the cost of regulatory functions. For the budget, future budget years, we have a data dictionary that goes with the tool and provides recommendations for our fee setting methodology. As part of the efforts of Marina and Company, they researched and reported on how other counties set their fees, known as benchmarking, which Mira will talk to in just a few minutes. They've also included how to incorporate an equity lens in the fee setting schedule, advantages and disadvantages of supplementing fees with general fund. And overall, our goal was to align with the GFOA best practices and ensure fee setting process is equitable and transparent. So our environmental health fees are created in alignment with Oregon advised administrative rules and Oregon revised statutes, as well as other state guidance. Some fees have rates set by the statutes and others are a little bit more flexible. So in total, the Environmental Health Program collects approximately 200 fees across three budget reporting categories that we have pools and tourists, restaurants, and other food licensing. So historically, each year, HHS has made incremental fee increases, averaging about 3% to 5% using the available methodology. These fees have been collected in a general fund account, which does not provide an opportunity for reserves or fund balance for environmental health. As you can see on the chart, on the screen, the revenues from fees have not covered expenses, which results in ongoing general fund subsidy requests. This fiscal year, we have budgeted 200, a little over 230,000 in general fund subsidy for fiscal year 22, 23 to cover our current gap between revenue and expenditures. As our CFO Greg Munn mentioned earlier today, the county is in the process of updating the strategic plan and financial policies to redesign the budget process. And we are hoping that our proposed fees using our new tools will align well.
I'm not understanding the right column on that 3 million, 2 and a half million, 2 million versus the left column. So I'm sorry, I'm missing something you're trying to.
Sure, on the left side, and we have our subject matter expert, John, in the room, just in case. So what you have, the bar graphs on the bottom represent the general fund subsidy that has supported our revenues and our expenditures. So that gap between our budgeted revenue, which is the orange line, and the budgeted expenditures, which is the blue line, that gap is where general fund has been filling for all of these.
I get that. I'm talking about clear to the right side of that graph, where it says 3 million, 2 and a half million, 2 million. What is that column? Because on the left side is 2 and 1/2, 2, 1 and 1/2. So what's the difference between those, the left side and the right side?
Good observation, John. Yeah, that is an excellent catch. That was the typo you mentioned earlier. Congratulations.
I get the price?
Yes, you get the price.
Okay, thank you.
I have one thing too. In your presentation, are you going to explain what the general fund subsidy was covering?
The general fund, what does the general fund?
You don't have to do it now, in your presentation. I want to know, yeah, what, what that's covering?
So the general fund subsidy has been covering the difference between the expenditures and the revenues, and predominantly, it's staff.
Purely, it's not a program or set of programs?
No, it's the whole category.
Yeah, it's the entire, entire package for environmental health.
So if the general fund subsidy that we're presenting here is for pools and tourist restaurants and other food licensing, which are three reporting categories in the overall Environmental Health Program. This does not pay for the Environmental Health Program as a whole. This is just three budget reporting categories. Is that?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just didn't know if it was one particular program or two, or whether it was grouping or.
Yes, thank you.
Explained, I think. Okay.
Yes, if we, if we identified each of these budget reporting categories as a program within the Environmental Health Program, then it would be three programs.
Because it's important to know what fee increases are based upon what is being subsidized. So a program has a big subsidy, it'd be nice to know that, some might be breaking even.
And we will explain a little bit later, just kind of what, what we do within each of those budget categories. But no, that's it, that's a great question. And again, apologies for, for the numbers not matching on the left and the right of the slide. An excellent catch, Commissioner Willie.
Yes, and that is a cumulative summary of general fund across the three categories. So thank you for the additional questions. So my last slide that I have before I turn it over to Mira is our fee assessment process. So we are going to provide a little bit more information about our new fee assessment process. We did task Marina and Company with the determining appropriate fees to fully capture cost recovery for future budget years, develop the data dictionary to go with each of the tools, to provide recommendations for the fee setting methodology and incorporate an equity lens. Within the requirement list, we needed to ensure that our costs would be comparable. So again, meeting the statutory and code requirements, that they were based on accurate and reliable data, they were able to forecast, make projections, that they were informing decision making. So the tool comes with an ability to, as you'll see on later slides, to differentiate between full cost recovery or any general fund subsidy at any proportion or percentage directed by your board. We have considered equity in the budgeting process. For example, well, Mira will talk about that later. The tool is easy to understand, it's easy to use, it's adaptable, we can replicate it. It's transparent, we can show all of the assumptions that went into the model and the exact numbers. So as a result, we, well, during the process, we had to reverse engineer the existing tool and then had to update and create a new simplified methodology, which is included in your memo. So I will turn it over to Mira.
Okay, thank you, Marie. So just wanted to go over a few assumptions that we incorporated as we developed our model. And so to develop our estimated fees and understand the impacts to those fees, we also made these assumptions that personnel salary information loaded into Questica, so into, into our budget documents, is a snapshot from December of 2022. So that's an assumption that we incorporated. We assumed flat rate for materials and supplies from fiscal year 22, 23. We used facility counts from this current fiscal year. And then we added, projected for some growth, so added a small projection for growth for facility counts. We assume the same overhead rate for fiscal year 22, 23 into this new fee model. And then we also assume the same state remittance fees per our intergovernmental agreement with the state. So when we use the tool and we incorporate all of these assumptions, that's what's going to populate into the fee increases that we're going to go over next. Also want to add some additional considerations that I think is important for this board to be aware of. So we don't have final numbers today. As you know, we're in the middle of our budgeting process, we're not at the end of our budgeting process. So we're still waiting on some finalized things from county finance. So, so, so personnel modifiers, personal expenses are still being finalized right now. That could impact our budget numbers. We also haven't had an opportunity to assess our material and supply needs in alignment with the county budget equity tool. So we're all, as departments, going through the process of our budget equity tool. So things like interpretation and translation, those types of things could impact our fees. It's still in process. Also, there are several changes to this year's budget process, as you've heard about from our county administrative team, from our CFO, we're re-dividing, designing our budget process. So new internal service funds, use of full cost, of the, sorry, use of full cost county cost plan and our budget add and reduction packages as a department. So those assumptions and those considerations are just important to note. So what we're presenting today is really the best information we have moving forward, but they are estimates at this point in time, they're not finalized numbers. So what are we recommending? What financial impacts do we expect to see? So for fiscal year 23, 24, HHS staff are recommending budgeting for 100% cost recovery model, which estimates a general fund subsidy savings of approximately 260,000. And this again is to minimize our general fund subsidy, that's the goal, and progress towards full cost recovery based on GFOA best practices. These proposed fees align with statutory requirements, as Marie talked about at the start of the presentation. They were informed by benchmarking with other counties as part of Marina and Company's assessment and process, and again, are in alignment with GFOA best practices. Oops, sorry, not done with this slide quite yet. Also, it's important to note that Marina and Company, they, the tools and calculated fees that they reviewed used abbreviated Public Health Equity Assessment found in the Public Health Division. So there was an equity lens to the work that they did. The tool includes a series of questions that we ask about proposals, decisions, projects, or programs that public health is planning, developing, or supporting. So the calculations for fees resemble what we call a targeted universalism approach to cost recovery. Targeted universalism means that individual fees are increased proportionate to associated costs instead of a flat increase. This offers a more equitable approach to fee increases. So as you can see on this slide, what you see is the impact of the proposed fee increase would result in fee increases of approximately a range of 5% to 14%, depending on the type of fee. So remember, there's over 200 different fees in EHS. So with a targeted universalism approach, we're not doing a flat rate and we're going to see this range. So an example here, so you'll see that first, those first two columns, the blue and the orange, a restaurant. So think of maybe a Stanford's, for example, a restaurant with over 150 seats, their fee would increase from 1,034 per year to 1,293. So an increase of $259, and that's for a full 12 months. A class four food cart, so there's four different kinds of food carts. So this would be the type that serves a full menu, not just serving something that's pre-prepared, but actually serving a full menu. Their fee would increase from 701 to 764 for a full year, or a $63 increase. A hotel with over 100 units, so perhaps think of an Embassy Suites or something similar, their fee would increase from $429 a year to $526 a year, or a $97 increase. A childcare center, such as a Head Start location, would increase from $375 a year to $407 a year, or a $32 increase. So as you can see, there's a wide range. And again, these are estimates based on all of the information we have now and the assumptions that we just went over. So again, the staff recommendation is 100% cost recovery. But for the board's consideration, we are including two other budget options. I'm including a 95% cost recovery model and a 90% cost recovery model. Those would be possible glide paths as we transition to full cost recovery. So I'm going to go over three grabs on the, three graphs on the next three slides that's going to go over three options for each budget category. So as Marie mentioned, we have three budget categories, restaurants, pools and tourists, and other food. And Commissioner Rogers will kind of explain a little bit more about each of those categories, which I think you were asking about earlier. I'll pause there, though, just to make sure there's no clarification so far, because I know it's a lot of information. Okay. So again, recommendations, so option one would be 100% cost recovery. So what you're going to see on this slide and then next to the orange bar, the chunky orange bar, is, is the estimated revenues. So the orange is the estimated revenues. The thin black line at the top, and I apologize, I know it's a little thin, so hopefully the public can see that. The thin black line at the top is estimated expenditures. The smaller yellow bar, you only see it on the options two and three, at the 95% and 90 level, is the estimated general fund subsidy. So that would be the amount of general fund needed to cover the gap between revenues and expenditures. Saying on this slide. And so restaurants, for example, as I talked about on the earlier slide, this would show an estimate of 11% average increase or $119 on average, depending on the size, if we moved to 100% cost recovery. And just explaining what happens in this category. So to protect the public's health, Washington County Environmental Health licenses and inspects restaurants, food carts, and other food service facilities to make sure they follow Oregon Department of Human Services food sanitation rules to help prevent and address foodborne illness. So we also provide education and food service operate, to for, to food service operators and issue food handlers card. So there's lots that, of things that staff do in this category, and that is the full cost recovery model is for all those services within that budget.
You mean just stopping him with that?
Yeah.
How about institutions? I mean, hospitals have hospital, have food service. You have schools who have food service, you have a lot of people that, there's, would those apply to them as well?
The schools, yes, childcare centers, yes, hospitals, looking to John.
So the hospitals, when they're open to the public, we do license and inspect those. Though the part of the kitchen where only serves the patients, we do not license or inspect. That is per standard for long.
Retail businesses, we're looking at a lot of folks.
And our program again spans across the entire county, not just on a corporate.
So the second part of his question was on school cafeterias?
Would you like to step forward? Yeah, would you like to step forward, come to the mic for the public? Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, John Kawaguchi, he, him, Environment Health Program Supervisor. So in response to the institutions and then also for the hospitals, the other, they presented three programs. And so the other food programs where the National School of Health Program is captured, so we do have a contract with Oregon Department of Education to perform the inspections for the National School of Health Programs. She will, I think that might be the next slide up here, yeah. So it's coming, so. Just looked at that, okay.
Just going to have John stay up here in case there's questions. So yes, excellent question. So we, we talked about the three different buckets. So I just started with the restaurants, okay? So going next to the pools and tourists, and I'll just tell you what's included here, because I think that'll get to the question. So this would be.
Next slide.
Thank you, perfect. So this would be, we have over 660 licensed swimming pools and spas. So program staff inspects public swimming pools and spas to minimize the risk of illness and to reduce safety hazards resulting in accidents. Tourist facilities include travelers' accommodations, hostels, picnic parks, recreation parks, and organizational camps. So Washington County Environmental Health licenses and inspects all tourist facilities in the county to protect the health and safety of the public. These inspections include evaluation of the facility's water supply, sewage disposal, plumbing, toilet facilities, garbage disposal, insect and rodent control, swimming pools, laundry rooms, and food service. So on this slide, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Tree.
How many, how many licensed pools were there again? What, did you say 600?
660, over 660. And those are licensed, not personal. Correct. So on this slide, you'll see in the 100% cost recovery option, again, you're going to see that's even with the black line. In option two and three, so for instance, if you were to look at option three at the 90% cost recovery model, we would need approximately $38,484 in general fund subsidy if we were to do a glide path and look at 90% instead of 100. At the 95%, again, you're looking at just a little over 19,000 in general fund subsidy. And then the last one, and this is Commissioner Rogers, where your question was, so what's included in other foods? So in this category, we are looking at childcare facilities and schools. So for instance, you would have a $15,000 estimated general fund subsidy if we were to look at the 90% level, little over 7,000 or close to 8,000 for the 95% level. Let me just make sure. So in, in terms of the childcare, John, do you want to mention anything about anything else in this category that I missed, childcare and schools, is there anything else? Okay, okay, great. So just to summarize, so what we're looking at is if we move forward with 100% cost recovery for fiscal year 23, 24, we estimate a general fund subsidy savings of approximately $260,000. And again, this moves us towards full cost recovery, you know, really as a philosophy within our department and as a county. And we're maximizing our cost recovery and following those GFOA best practices. Staff are going to be continuing to work on refining and preparing our fee schedule. Again, the assumptions we had and some of the things that we don't know for sure yet are going to be incorporated. And of course, we're looking for the board's feedback today and in how you feel about this, this presentation. We also are going to be obtaining a feedback during the upcoming Public Health Advisory Council meeting that's coming up right around the corner on January 10th. So that is our presentation. I know it's a lot of information and a lot of the details, again, were in those attachments. So we welcome your questions, if there's anything we can explain further for you.
Question on, are irrigation systems like comb irrigations, are they inspected by you? Because there is fees, I know that you pay to have somebody come out and do that. Are we affecting, I'm trying to figure out how many people are all impacted by it.
You're thinking about the backflow.
Yeah, you're exactly right, sprinkler system.
Commissioner, no. Excuse me, Washington County Environment does not inspect those. So my understanding is the municipalities where their drinking water programs, that each district, they'll, so when you submit the certification that your backflow prevention device was checked, that goes straight to the city or the municipality that has that water district.
Tiger 12, but we don't do it in accounting, so.
TVW, T, Valley Water District, does it for the unincorporated.
City of Hillsborough Water District, and so all the different water districts, I believe, are the ones that ensure or requires you to, as a resident, to have your backflow prevention devices checked.
So a lot of information, a lot of analysis has been done. Thank you for both the slide overview as well as the detailed memo our Washington County staff has provided, as well as the consultants. It's very clear to me that you've done a lot of due diligence to look at the different kinds of fees, different circumstances. So commissioners, what questions and comments do you have? And I'll remind you of the policy questions that are, there you go. So we have the fee increases here with HHS. I'm not, Mira, I need a reminder, you talked about there was a next step of going to the Public Health Advisory Committee, and I've lost.
That's okay, the Chair Harrington, that wasn't on the slide, so it's probably why you don't see it. It was in the memo, I believe, so that is the next step, but you won't see it on the slide.
Yep, so in terms of touch points, you'll be going, it was also summarized in the worksheet. It, I think if I have this right, you'll take the proposal to the advisory committee as well. And I'm wondering, in terms of the touch point with the board and are giving a thumbs up, Ms. Angie, are you going to coordinate those on the same days or different sort of days? Because I know, as mentioned, department budgets are due in early February. So I don't need the exact week, I just generally, I'm wondering, is today our singular thumbs up? Or will there be another touch point?
We can, we can circle back with the board if your board would like another touch point on this item to include.
But if we could today, that would be.
If, if you could today, from building their budget, I know HHS would appreciate it in conversation with the HHS team, however, they can be flexible to meet your needs.
Okay, well, let's see how we end up. Okay, commissioners, feedback, who wants to go first? Go ahead, Commissioner Tree. Has been, has been said, lots of information here and really good detail. I'm in support of 100%, you know, what the staff recommendation is. And I think that, that the increases are different than the LUT increases because you've been, you've been progressing over the years. So it's not a giant shock, so I'm, I'm fine with that and I'm fine with the 100%. I am really concerned about why I don't know that there are 660 pools in this county, because I just went through what I would think, and I've come up with maybe 200.
Just to comment, because there hasn't been any outbreaks on pools and spas, because we've been doing our work.
I swear, John. There you go, there you go. Pools and spas. Yeah, I know, but the spa. Well, some facilities, like there's a health club near me that has multiple pools, but they also have those spa pools. And so those each count as one?
No, so yeah, each one is one. So the only pools and spas per statute are your private residential spas or pools that we do not license and inspect. So the clubs where there's like, you know, there's a number with. Each one of those are separate, and then the amount of apartments and condos and hotels, a lot of those have pools and spas. So that's where the number.
Starts adding up, okay, now I get you.
All right.
Okay, who would like to go next? Go ahead.
I think it's interesting that that was Pam's biggest concern. But anyway, so could we go to slide 24?
If only we had over 660 childcare providers. No kidding. And we may, but.
There you go, yeah, I'll solve a lot of problems.
Oh, I was just gonna say that. So with childcare providers per statute, they're not required to utilize a public health inspections. So it's a safety and sanitation inspection. And in Washington County, there's about 600 or so, plus or minus providers. We have of the 600 or so, we do inspect about a third of them total, because again, they're not required to utilize our services. They can use private inspectors. And so a lot of them, many of them do because of the, the cost and overhead, what it costs to hire a private inspector. So yeah, there's over, about, about 600.
I want it to be higher. We need it.
Yes, we need it to be higher. That's right. Anyway, go ahead, Commissioner Willie. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. That was a good question. So on slide 24 here, as you pointed out, the bottom line is the gray general fund subsidies. Why does it fluctuate so much to a minimum of 129,000 in 2021 to 322,000 just the next year? And so what is, what is causing these huge fluctuations in general fund subsidy?
John, I think you can take this one.
So, I mean, that's part of the reason why we hired the consultant, because a lot of the this actual workbooks that were created were before I started here. And even when I started here about 10 years ago, Nora's predecessor did not create that either. And so, and he didn't know exactly how it worked. So that's part of the reason why we wanted to go with a consultant to kind of identify the input that we put, that we're entering and then what the outcomes were, because you would think it would be closer than that. So there are a lot of questions to why there are so many variability. Part of it is depending on from year to year, what kind of projections we had on the growth of the county or as far as the number of facilities. The last couple of years were really challenging because of COVID. We, we in discussions, collaborations with other neighboring counties, we, we all said, well, would this kind of calculate roughly a 20% reduction or what we felt was going to be a reduction because of COVID people closing or operators closing? So we reduced our revenue because of that, thus creating, you know, more need for general funds. So as part of it is that, and then part of it is, is the staffing personnel costs and benefits, you know, somewhere within those last five years, there's been a spike or increase in benefits and personnel costs. So some of that is occurs after we try to calculate or project our revenue. So therefore that really hits us hard too with actually the need for more general fund.
So if I would go into our budget document, what I find more detail as to, I guess I'm having trouble, I'm having a little trouble with the huge fluctuations. I'm having trouble with not understanding what exactly the cost drivers are to that. And so it's kind of like I need to see a P and L, which is probably not a good thing for me to have to look at. But, but yeah, I'd like to see a little bit more granular detail on why these huge fluctuations. And then we, you know, you've added up the, the 100% versus the 90%. And it looks like, what is it, 260,000 is the delta projected if we don't do 100%? So basically what you're telling me is historically, we've been doing about 90%. So we've been a 10% shortfall every year. Okay. So, okay, yeah, I guess I'd like to just see what the cost drivers are that, that's creating these huge fluctuations. Because again, what it's, we're holding all of the department headcount accountable. We want to know where they're spending their money for their departments and what's causing all of these shortfalls. And that's what I just want to have a little better understanding before I just say, I'm good with 100%. So I'm not ready to make that decision. And I'm sorry, Tanya, I'd like to do that, but I'm not ready.
Yeah, I think actually Commissioner Willie, I'm going to invite Nora Delon up, our Administrative Services Manager. So I think she can describe a little bit, maybe not as in-depth as you're looking for, but I think a little bit more about the variation and what has impacted that.
And so maybe some of this information is in the, this attachment has 62 pages to it, and I did not read all 62 pages. So maybe it's in there somewhere. And if it is, I apologize. I'll do my homework better.
And before, I just verified that I do have a questionnaire. The, the blue line on this chart and the orange line, shouldn't the expenditures be greater than the revenue? Okay, so that, so I'm not going crazy. Okay, so those two numbers are in reverse.
Good point. Okay. I thought the delta was the 233. And it is actually, the 233 is the delta. It's just a good point.
But I didn't understand.
Yeah, okay.
You are correct. Yes, another, another good catch. My apologies. We'll get that updated.
I just also want to point out that I appreciate that you've stated very clearly that the prior model, if I refer to the new model and the older model, the older model was not, it was hard to understand and all of the factors that went into it, how it worked, and that you did your best over the last few years to to work on the projections to try and get it right.
Yes.
But you were a bit challenged with the way that model works. And what I hear from you is with this new model, you're able to see the relationship between the fee use, the use for the services and the cost coverage.
Precisely, sure.
So I've got it. Got it. Thank you. Okay, now dive deeper, please.
Hi, I'm Nora Delon. I use she/her/hers pronouns, and I'm the Administrative Services Manager for Health and Human Services. Thank you for having me today. So I will share just, just what you discussed, Chair, that, that over time, we haven't had the historical knowledge to be able to see what exactly our drivers are. With this new tool, it will provide us with those inputs so that we have a sustainable model into the future to look at exactly what our drivers are, what we want to forecast into the future, and if we have any differences in our inputs. So to answer your question about the fluctuations, definitely in 2021 COVID. So a lot of our restaurants closed. There were huge changes in the environments in which we are working with. But a big driver in our costs is personnel. And so, excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat. And so one of the things that we're tasked with in environmental health and public health and HHS as a whole is the number of FTE that we have and the percent split of that FTE across various activities. So if you take a program like environmental health that has several layers of activities and trying to estimate the percent FTE in a snapshot in time that will be needed, it's a difficult challenge. And so this tool really provides us with an opportunity to do a better job at that. And so really, we've looked at our actuals over time, been able to put that into our tool and then looked at our budgeted forecast as well. So hopefully that helps. There is some more detail in the report, but hopefully that helps with the framework.
So we'll leave it right there for the moment. Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Phi, thoughts, questions, what have you?
I don't have a lot. I'm for the 100%, as you might guess, in conversations. And then my only comment would be to do exactly what Luck said that they would do, and that would be to emphasize what efforts you're doing to curtail costs. Because I, it's just too easy to pass costs on and not do any economy. The question I have, and maybe to Commissioner Willie's question, are all fees on an annual basis? And do you have timing differentials? So are pools inspected every year? And if they are, okay, then I don't understand why the fluctuation. If they're every couple of years, I can understand that. And do you have timing differences between the for the COVID? So that maybe things that you might have done in certain months, you had delay several months. And so that would cause a timing difference in revenue.
So yes, as far as per statutes, the fees are annual for, for the restaurants, for the temporary restaurants, I'm sorry, not temporary, for the restaurants and mobile units, those are required by law to be inspected twice a year. So once between January and June, and the second time between July and December. And then with pools and spas, there's some that are seasonal and then there's some that are year round. So the seasonal ones going, referring back to the apartments, the ones that are outdoors, you know, in the climate or here in Oregon, you can't really enjoy the pool year round. So some of those have a seasonal, which we inspect once a year. And then we have a year round ones that we do inspect this year. So the ones that are indoors at Chair Harrington's clubs or the spa that can be open year round because they're nice and warm. So those, and then we have the port, the tourism travel accommodations, those are inspected also once a year. A question as far as with the fees, the license fees are all, they all expire at the end of the calendar year. So as of December 31st, they expire. And we collect in January. So these fees will, excuse me, for FY 2324, those fees would be implemented in July 1st, 2023. So, you know, and what happened, you know, July, July of this year, we implemented our new fees or current fees. And a majority of our collection or revenue will be collected now through, through the end of February. So as far as timing wise, it gets, it'll be improved. We'll still collect it within that fiscal year, but it will be in the second half of the fiscal year.
You have a 68-month lag between.
Yes, a majority of them, yes. We do have some that, excuse me, some, any operators that opened, they, they opened, they required to be inspected. They're required to meet minimum specification requirements. So they do get licensed when they open. It all depends if it's a renewal or if it's a change of ownership or if it's a new facility.
That doesn't, any of that explain his question. Helps us to understand when things are going to happen, but.
Right, right, right.
Not the variations.
Not the variations, correct, correct.
The variations on subsidy goes more to the old model.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if it would be helpful to your board. However, up until this current fiscal year with the modified base budget, that was a requested general fund subsidy. It may have helped if we put forward what the actual subsidy was because any subsidy requested and unused has the opportunity to be returned back every, at the end of it, every fiscal year. So it's, it's not a those are not actuals of how much general fund was used.
Yeah, there's proposed budget, adopted budget, and then actuals.
Yep. And we could go down a huge rabbit hole in this conversation. I do want to say this does also connect to our budget transformation and as we call it, really looking at our whole fund accounting structure and aligning our fund accounting structure based on the type of funds and type of use of, of those funds. That's a whole nother conversation.
Commissioner Phi, how about you?
Okay, the question that Commissioner Rogers asked around the inspections and the, the fee, annual fee or whatnot. The food cards, especially temporary events, we charge those too, right? There is a fee requirement.
Yes. So the, the temporary type of food, temporary restaurant license where it's a, like a farmer's market or any kind of temporary event that pops up and they operate for the day or at the fair even, that's like a week or two week long period. Those are event or activities for, for a certain period of time. So we inspect those at least once during their operation for the tempers. The food carts or mobile food units, they also get inspected twice a year. So they get an annual license. And they get inspected twice a year. Again, as mentioned earlier, like a restaurant, once between January and June, and then a second time between July and December.
And then those fees for the Saturday markets and farmer's market will increase as well, right? This 100% or the 90%, 95%.
Right, it'd be incremental depending on, again, the, from the, the data results from the marine and companies workbooks that they created. So and then it really, you know, depending on the number of facilities and where we're at as compared to what was used before in the previous workbook is how everything were calculated. You know, the thought is moving forward, we can utilize this new workbook. And then it'll be consistent throughout and we'll learn more about it. But the full, you know, we'll have that information as far as where we can do 100% cost recovery or we can look at options of 90, 95% present and to the board, we have a better understanding of how it works versus the existing or the previous workbook that we used.
Thank you. I think you guys did a really great job presenting. I thought it was going to be less, when I read the material, I thought, yes, LUT is going to be a bit more complicated, even though we've had a previous presentation and had an in-depth conversation. I thought yours was going to be less complicated, but then it morphed into this conversation. But I thought you all did a really great job of presenting this information and synthesizing for us to understand and for the public that are viewing. The question, I don't even know if it's a question I had, but it really came from Erin earlier. One of the questions I asked around, and her comment, one of the things that she mentioned, and I'm going to butcher the name of it, but it was a relief program for people who are going to be financially impacted this fee increase. Is there such a thing that exists for, for the environmental health services? And I think that was the relief for hardship.
Excellent question, Commissioner Phi. And no, we, we don't have that currently as an option in this model.
And we don't, I don't even know if the statutes would allow us to do that either.
That's a good point as well.
We do have fee categories for benevolent organizations, community service type of businesses or agencies or organization like churches, feeding sites. So they do, we do have fees for those kind of operations, but we do not have any hardship at this point.
And we're talking about public health here. I, I just wanted to put this into context.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that I heard in my participation with some festivals is people who want to take advantage of that day and make some money and share their goods and services. It was the, the, the fee to apply that one day service was cost, it was pretty costly for them or, but people, so that, those are the feedbacks that I heard. And so I don't know what Washington County is. I think I remembered it. This is many years ago from Multnomah County, the festival was in downtown Portland. Those festivals, but some of the vendors, food vendors, especially the comments was the, the fee for the one day was too high. And they would have appreciated the scaling system. I, I never investigated if such thing existed in Multnomah County. I sort of said, oh, you should reach out to the public health of that department of that county to try to figure out and negotiate. But that's why I mentioned the fee for service. This isn't any way reducing the public health expertise, what they're going to do. But it's just sort of alleviates some of that financial burden for people to participate in those.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. And I think we, I don't believe it's in the attachments, but we can definitely get you the exact, you know, the exact rates that would be proposed for, you know, more of a one-day event or a one-week event so that you have that information.
And this is where the sponsorship for such events being cities and service districts like THPRD can bear the cost of sponsor, sponsoring those activities that we generally cannot do.
We would need to also do, as I believe one of the commissioners had mentioned, just review statutorily because the fees need to align with the, the fee for the service. So if we would put into such of a cost curtailment program, we would have to then increase the other fees to cover, cover that, whatever that cost gap would be. And that may not meet statutory requirements.
Okay, well, Commissioner Phi, do you have any thoughts on the proposed 90, 95, 90% options?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I think this is really great information to follow. I like to participate or hear the concerns or the questions in the Public Health Advisory Committee and give my feedback afterwards. So I'm not ready today.
Thank you.
I meant to say that earlier.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm sorry, where are those questions in the fees that you're referring to in here?
No, what questions?
Yeah. So I missed.
She, like you, is not ready to.
I missed it.
I didn't say a question without.
Okay, so for the benefit of time. Cause we've been at this a while, longer than projected. Um, I am all set with moving forward with the hundred percent proposal. So you have a majority of three of us ready to move forward with that. Uh, I want to really give you a lot of credit, uh, and shout out for the development of this new model. It included comparables from five different, uh, county jurisdictions. So thank you very much for that information as well. You've really given us through this presentation quite a flavor. Of that range of two hundred different fees and the extent of work that. Uh, your environmental health group does each and every day. For all these different categories to ensure public health. Nobody likes an E. coli breakout, for example, or other infections that can happen through pools and spas. Let alone food. So thank you for being so good at your jobs. Um, and also so thorough in developing the new model. I have a suggestion. Uh, I did note if I internalized it correctly. Uh, that different counties, uh, some adjust fees annually. Others, uh, like Marion County every three years. Um, so. I would suggest, uh, you're gaining your year over year experience for two or three years. With this new model. And yes, of course, year over year, you have the opportunity to refine it. But at least at a minimum after two or three years of full, um, utilization. Looking at how the fees changed in different categories year over year. Uh, and, uh, see if the the new model with, say, a hundred percent is. Working smoothly enough for the plethora of customer bases that you work with. So I know it's work, I'm suggesting just make sure that, uh. You have a system and I guess thinking this through. I want to ensure you have enough of a system in place to gather some customer feedback along the way. So that you can then look back on that and, right, feedback is a gift. Those you don't hear from, you have to assume are satisfied enough, right? Uh, but does that three years out, does that tell you anything about how the model's been working? That's all.
Thank you for the recommendation, Chair, and and thank you for your time and attention. And this was a lot of information, um, between two different departments. Um, but we we hope we did a good job of showing kind of that one Washington County approach, moving towards that full cost recovery model with the GFOA best practices.
Thank you for your two hundred and sixty thousand estimated of savings to help address the, what was it? Twenty five million dollar gap at this point.
Yeah.
Can I just circle back on next steps? Because we did really have, um, two, uh, meeting topics this afternoon. Um, so we will be coming back to your board, um, with, um, the requested follow-up information for L U T. Um, which really a focus on the stakeholder engagement that the team is going to be working on really quickly. Cause we do want to get this in in front of your board, um, hopefully at some point in February. We will also present to your board then the feedback loop on what we heard from the Public Health, um, Advisory Committee as far as feedback. Um, on these fees and then the follow-up information, um, that there was, uh, relative just to the fluctuation and revenues. And expenditures, um, for environmental health. Commissioner Willie?
So what, when were you expecting, when can we expect this to come back? Because what I want to communicate is, um, I appreciate the information. I just need a little bit more. I think you'll get. You'll get a unanimous vote out of this group once we, Nafisa and I kind of get our follow-up questions. So we want to say we're supportive of you.
So I will be directing staff to prepare the budget with a hundred, uh, ninety five ninety percent. Do I have the percent, those options? And then we can, at least then we can pull on what lever the board wants to make for the final recommendation. Similarly, um, L U T will be building with a fee increase. Um, however, to get to a final proposed budget, that's why we want to get back before your board with final thumbs up. Sometime ideally February, but, um, I haven't circled back with the team on the exact date.
Well, I just want to clarify, make, I I don't want them to do a bunch more work for the ninety five and the ninety if we're all going to say a hundred.
We we have mechanics work out behind the scenes.
Okay.
On this, we already talked about it prior to.
They've got enough things, we don't need to be adding to it when we know we're probably going to end up at hundreds, so. However, that works for you.
I thought the chair said majority was four hundred and so you got the.
This is something that, Nafisa, we need to be unanimous on. So, uh, I just, I'm sure that you're going to get your questions answered as am I. I'm just communicating that message to them that we're going to get to unanimous on this. It's not going to be three two.
We may. Thank you. Right, thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our work session agenda topics. Was there anything else that may have come up? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned.